Okay, we'll call our meeting to order. Pikeville Independent School Board Meeting with the Pikeville Site Base Council of the High School. And we'll call our meeting to order now. We'll have Mr. Garrus, our A.D., first come and introduce.
Mr. Garrus is going to be giving a report concerning extracurricular activities. It's good to have you with us today.
Thank you. Glad to be here. It's kind of a rushful evening. I have to run off to the soccer. Our boys and girls soccer teams are both playing this evening. Our girls are playing in Lawrence County for the regional championship. And our boys are playing up here at Bob Amos, playing Johnson Central tonight for the regional championship. So it's an exciting night, and it's first in Pikeville history that one of our soccer teams has advanced this far to the regional finals. So we're hoping to make history. First off, what I'd like to say is we have several sports that have finished and some that are still going on. Our girls golf team this year was coached by Vicki McClurg and Lyle Blackburn. Had a very good, had a very successful season. Had a real young team. They won the All-A Regional Tournament and finished in fifth place during the All-A State Tournament. Stacey Goots finished third in the whole regional tournament in September. She did not make the cut for day two of the state tournament, but we were very proud of her. The girls, we had a sixth grader, a couple of seventh graders, a sophomore and a junior that made up our girls' golf team this year. And hopefully that Ms. McClurg, I have asked her if she will continue to coach next year, and she said as long as we would have her, and she's going to try to recruit more golfers for next year. So that's a plus. Our boys' golf team was very young as well. Noah Combs qualified for the All-A State Tournament, but he did not participate that weekend for the fact that their team was playing in a tournament in Mount Sterling, and he decided to compete with his team that weekend. And, but we were very proud of Noah for that. Noah also won the regional tournament. He's only the fifth golfer in Pikeville High School history to win the regional tournament. That goes with Jimmy Newsom, Bruce Gray Walters, Little Bruce Walters, and Grover Justice. So that's a great accomplishment there. Noah finished tied for 25th at the state tournament. We also had a JV schedule this year that was made up of seventh and eighth graders and one freshman that played against a lot of varsity competition. And that's, that was coached by Judge Steve Combs, and we appreciate Steve and Steve Ray for taking that responsibility on. And I hope Mr. Ray and Judge Combs will continue to do that again next year. Our volleyball team had a very successful regular season. Finished 27 and 8, tied for the most wins in school history. They won the Harrison County Tournament at the end of the season. They played six games in one day and won that tournament, so that was a big accomplishment. Blair Pack recorded her 500th career kill this year. We finished as district runner-up. We lost very tough five sets to East Ridge in the district finals. We won the first game of the regional tournament last night defeating Paintsville. And we will play Allen Central tomorrow night in the semifinals up at Pike Central at 6:30. So everybody's invited out to that. Our junior high football team, we had very good numbers out this year for that. We had about 36 kids. Had a, didn't have a successful record, but we had a winning season. Belfry beat us three times. We were actually the county runner-up, and they beat us in the finals. But overall, we, we had a very successful junior high football season. Our girls' soccer, as I mentioned earlier, is playing this evening. They were 14 and 5 in the regular season. Made history this year by being the first time a team has gone to the state in soccer, which we won the All-A Region and Sectional for the 15th and 16th Region. We lost to the eventual state champion Lexington Christian in the state tournament at the All-A. We won the district and are playing in the finals tonight at Lawrence County. If we win tonight, we will host the winner of the 16th Region Monday night at Bob Amos Park at 7 o'clock. Our boys' soccer team finished the regular season at 10, 3, and 1. They had a hard time getting teams to schedule them this year. Several teams in the region would not play them. We played Paintsville last night, first game in the regional tournament, beat them 2 to nothing. We are playing Johnson Central tonight. They also made history this year by being the first boys' soccer team to play in a state tournament. They won the sectional All-A because no one competed against them in the region. Beat West Carter 4 to 1. Lost to the eventual state champion St. Henry in the All-A State Tournament by a score 4 to 1. We won the district and playing in the finals tonight. And if the boys win tonight, we will host the winner of the 16th Region Tuesday night at Bob Amos Park. Our football team is currently 3 and 5, and we should win this Friday, which would make us 4 and 5. If you looked at our schedule and the kind of team we've had this year, that's pretty good right now. Very young team. We've played a very tough schedule. But I think it's, it's going to make us better down the road, and, and we're getting a lot of experience for our younger players, and it will pay off. The playoffs will start November the 2nd by beating South Florida last week. And if we beat Allen Central this week, we will be the district winner, and all the playoff games will be at home as long as we continue to win. We win the, if we beat Allen Central this Friday, we will play Paintsville on November the 2nd for our first playoff game. Our cross-country team, we've had a lot of meets. We still have two meets left. Some team members ran in the Pikeville Pink for community service as well. The region is November 3rd, and we should have about 10 students that are qualified to participate in that as well. And if we have anybody that, that, cross-country's a little different, and it's based on time. So if we have anybody that finishes in the top 10, they will go on to state, and that will be at the Kentucky Horse Park. Our boys and girls basketball teams are just officially started practice yesterday, and will be traveling back to Pittsburgh this year. Both teams will play in the EQT Tournament. I received a phone call yesterday from Cannon McMillan High School's Athletic Director. Our first round game for the boys will be on Friday, December the 7th against Trinity High School. They participated in it last year. Our girls will play on Friday night at 6:15, and they will be playing at Cannon McMillan Middle School, and they will be playing Blairsville. They also have an eight-team girls' tournament this year there. So they invited our girls to come up and play, and I think that will be an exciting time for them and for our boys as well. That tournament has been, been very successful for us. It made a lot of money when, when we were here with it, and also last year we had some success. The girls also have a trip to Daytona Beach during Christmas break. They will be playing in Father Lopez Tournament at Daytona Beach. Our junior high girls' basketball team is having a very good season. We're 12 and 4 right now. Had a wonderful turnout this past Saturday for the Pink Panther Day. They were the runner-up in the tournament. They also won the preseason county championship, and they will be finishing up here at the end of October with their regular season and getting ready for the county tournament. Our junior high boys started having tryouts yesterday as well, and they will start playing in November 11th. And so far, I think, you know, with all of our athletics, we've got a lot of student athletes that are participating so far through the fall. We will have two winter sports going on, and then this spring we will have about six counting our junior high and high school. It's a very busy time here at Pikeville High School and junior high.
So currently, we have three regionals going on with the girls' and boys' soccer and the volleyball.
Right. So we've had, you know, our, our sports have had a lot of success this year.
And one of those success stories we're going to recognize individually tonight at this time with Mr. Noah Combs, please come forward. Mr. Combs, as Mr. Garrus mentioned, was the, a region's representative in the All-State Golf Tournament. And I believe you finished number 25 in the state of Kentucky of all the golfers. Could you please share with us?
Well, that was, yeah.
How many golfers were competing down there?
There were 150 of them.
150. You came in.
I tied for 25th.
Tied for 25th. Congratulations, and thank you for recognizing. And I ask him if he would do this, and of course, he said he'd rather not, but I'm still asking him anyhow, if he, if he would please share. Could you just give us an overview of the state down there? Is it just 18 holes that you go play? How many days is it?
It's two days, and it's 36. If you qualify for the second day, you have to shoot like a 79 or below to qualify for the second day.
And I understand that at one time you were four strokes off the lead for the entire Commonwealth, right? Okay. And most of your competition was probably at the senior level?
Yeah. Most of the, yeah. Well, the local team, they're all seniors.
Anything else you'd like to share with us about the tournament? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Garrus, we appreciate you. And any questions from board members or anything that you have regarding athletics or any of the upcoming events? If not, we wish you and the teams the best tonight, okay?
Well, thank you all.
And we'll try to catch some of those if the meeting allows and time allows.
Hopefully, we'll win both of them tonight and get ready to host next week.
Keep us up to date on scores.
I'll take it.
That's recognition there.
Yes.
Do you want me to just recognize those two, or do you just want to hold off until you can go for your next one? Bring them back. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Huffman as the high school junior high that was the gracious host tonight for the board meeting. I couldn't think of a better way to know about what's going on at our school than to ask Ms. Huffman to talk, have some of her kids just explain what's going on. So feel free to ask questions and interact with them.
First of all, before I begin, I'd like to introduce these three individuals, Abby, Caitlin, and Jared. You have something to share with us?
Yes, it's a surprising telegram for you.
Let there be Abby.
Let there be Jared.
Let there be Caitlin.
You know what we mean.
Let there be bluebirds.
Allah can adore.
But first of all, please, 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 let there be love.
Because you're nobody till somebody loves you.
You're nobody till somebody cares.
You might be king, you might possess the world and its gold.
Gold can't bring you happiness when you're growing old.
The world remains the same.
You'll never change it.
Change it.
As sure as the stars shine above.
You're nobody, 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 nobody till somebody loves you.
Go out and get yourself somebody.
Somebody to love.
Ladies and gentlemen, go out and get yourself somebody to love, and take them to our show. Next Saturday, the 27th, in the auditorium at 7:00. It's the dinner show, well, you'll have dinner at 6:00, and the show will begin at 7:00 in the auditorium. You can buy tickets here and now, so do so. Thank you for having us.
This, this is one of the fundraisers that we're having at Pikeville Independent Schools, the singing telegrams for the drama department. And I understand several of our students are out doing some of these singing telegrams tonight. If it's after-school hours, it's $10, my understanding, right?
Yes, it's $10 in the community, and...
Here's my $10. So we appreciate the effort and look forward to seeing you guys in the drama.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I had approached Mr. Green and Mr. Rowe about having officers from our clubs to share with you all some of the things they're doing. They're doing a lot, and I feel very fortunate that Pikeville High School is able to have teachers who will sponsor clubs. I have a form in front of me. This is for, I noticed this, this is a form, a selection format for governor-scholar. And I guess I didn't realize 40%, 40 points of the 100 is based on extracurricular activities, service, leadership roles, and honors and awards. So if we didn't provide a lot of what we provide, this would hurt them here. And I just am tickled to death that we have these opportunities for these kids. So many of them just, when they leave here, they go on and do things that are unbelievable. So I know Ms. Prater is a sponsor. I'm not, the drama department, I know we have, well, they'll tell you. I'll just start with that. But in looking at this, it's so important, I think, being involved in extracurricular activities. So I'm going to turn this over to Amon.
Hi, guys. As Ms. Huffman said, I'm Amon, and I'm a senior this year at Pikeville High School. So my first topic of the day is going to be FBLA, which is the Future Business Leaders of America. I am proud to say that FBLA is one of the biggest and most successful clubs at Pikeville High School. Last year, 95% of our competitors made it to the state level, with 50% of those competitors moving on to the national level. In fact, I remember Ms. Prater pointed this out, during regionals, the M.C. made a comment that there must be something in the water at Pikeville, to which we responded, "A desire for excellence." And that totally connects with FBLA, because, you know, being president, Ms. Prater and I work to push our members into knowing how important it is to be a leader, have community service, and, you know, have that desire to compete. So far, we have already raised over $800 for the margin dimes. We have made breast cancer awareness posters, which are located all over the school, and are working towards our next community service event, which will be No Shade November, which is going to be interesting, but I'll let you know how it goes. So as the year proceeds on, I'll keep you guys informed on all of our success. Okay? I have three, so I'll try to move fast. My second topic of the day will be the academic team. To me, the academic team is kind of a keystone club in the Pikeville High School community. We're known for our excellence, and the team has had a really bright start this year. We placed eighth at a national competition, being the only team in Kentucky to place as far as we did. As captain of my team, I stand witness to how hard we work, practicing every day from 3 to 5, and often coming in on Saturdays to, you know, perfect our subjects. The team so far is undefeated, and if I may be frank, we intend to stay that way. So as the year goes on, I'll keep, I'll keep you guys updated on our success, and I'll hopefully bring you guys back at another state title. So I said thank you so much and have a good night, but apparently I have to talk about one more thing. So one last thing before I go is we're going to talk about the Pride Club. Jared Otten and I are co-presidents of the Pride Club. And the Pride Club is a countywide environmental club. Some of our efforts include putting recycling bins in all of the rooms, turning off unneeded lights, and having campus cleanups. Our efforts have been awarded by the county with several awards and grants. And as president, I think that we can both vow that we will have a bright and green future.
Yeah, there's actually three presidents.
Oh, Sarah Byer.
Yes. Quite Democratic. All three of us are in charge of a different big project this year. Sarah's in charge of America Recycles Day, and that's going to be taking place soon. Is that next week?
I think so.
Next week at the thing at the Main Street, what's it called?
Oh, the Save Trick or Treat. We will have a booth, and we'll be giving out candy and information about, you know, environmental things.
And your project is?
My project is Earth Hour, which consists of all of us turning off our lights for just one hour. It saves so much energy, and I'll be sponsoring and advertising that more when the time comes.
And I am in charge of Earth Day, which is like way up in April, but we're actually going to extend it into Earth Week, and have a week-long celebratory process for the earth and environmental education. So we're very proud of this club, and we hope to accomplish a lot more.
I have a recycling question. I'm having to take my tin cans and glass containers to Lexington to recycle them.
I know that we have plastic and cardboard that we recycle ourselves. We put together, and the city takes it. I can check about glass and tin?
There's actually, there's the big bin outside of the athletic field, and we have one behind the school, too. I think aluminum cans are a part of that.
It, it has the cans, like Coke cans, but I don't think it has tin. I don't think it has glass.
I will definitely check that for you.
Would you check that, please?
Yeah. Mr. Ors, do you have tin or...
Yes, I can get you a member.
And I will definitely contact you about that. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Another problem solved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to run for soccer game.
Jared is also president of the National Honor Society, so while he's up here, he can go ahead and share some things.
The National Honor Society is, I don't know, it's different, because it's the only club you really have to apply to to get in and have to be, I mean, there's student council, but this one's like based on grades and, there's a GPA requirement. So the people in there are usually our top-notch students, and they're the ones you see walking across with the blue sashes at graduation, of course. And we're trying this year to do a lot more community service than we have, and usually we tell our members who are required to have 15 hours of community service every year to, you know, find other ways of doing it. This year, we're trying to provide multiple facets created by our club to do that. And our first was the blood drive, which we do every year, except this year we're doing it in two parts. And our goal is to raise 300, like have 300 people donate total. And we're getting there slowly. Our first one, we had 32 students and staff who gave blood. A lot more tried, but weren't eligible for health reasons. So hopefully, we can get our health up, new launches. Also, we have...
I think they had some soccer tournaments and stuff, and coaches did one of them.
Yeah, that's true. A lot of people were busy with athletics as well. So we have another one in the spring. Hopefully, the fall people can do that, and we can get more numbers. But we've worked with, yeah, we contacted the little blood drive thing, I think it's down in, it's right across from Elizole, like down that area. There's a little center. And if you go in and tell them you're donating blood for Pike, in the name of Pikeville High School, then they will add that to our account. So that's very nice. So drop by and do that when you can. And we're, we're trying to work out some community service with the homeless shelter, because we did that once before with Mr. Rock's World History Class, and that was really nice. It was a really fun time. We had dinner with the, with the residents, brought in food. And so we hope to do that again. And we're looking for more projects all the time. I was just told today that YMCA is doing a walk around Thanksgiving, so we're going to try to get involved with that. But yeah, we're just trying to encourage our members that community service is not just about the numbers or reaching a certain, it's just, you know, about giving back to the community. And I think that's so important. It's overlooked. So...
Thank you.
Thank you. Still have a group here with?
My name's Larry David Keane, and I'm a part of FCA. I'm one of the leadership, one of the leadership team. And sorry for my clothes. I just got from football practice. Anyways, FCA stands for Future, or not Future, but Fields of Christian Athletes. And the main thing that we stress is that you don't have to be athlete to be part of this group. That's, that's the big misconception that a lot of people have, of course, FCA. That's why a lot of people don't come, is because they think, "Well, no, I'm not an athlete. I can't go." Learn about God and the Lord times. But we just try to stress that that's not, that's not who we are. We just want, it's just a name. That's all it is. But every Thursday in the morning, right before school, we start usually about 7:30, 7:35. We have one of the leadership team do a lesson devotional thing, and that lasts probably about 15 to 20 minutes. And then we have singing and songs, and then at the end, we pray. And usually, we gather around the flagpole in a big circle. And I think it just gives a good image of how our school is and still based a whole lot on Christian values. And I just want to thank you all for allowing us to be able to study that here. So that's a, it's a big thing that America's got away from. But probably about a week ago, we had a Wednesday night thing. It's called Fields of Faith. And it was, it started from, I don't know where it started, I think it was in Alabama somewhere, that just, one of the gym coaches just had an idea that one day have church on the football field, and every, every year, they just, it just grew and grew, and now it's a national thing. And every, all the FCA's around America take part in that every year. So we actually had, we were going to get Coach Kelly Wells to speak, but he couldn't make it because of his health. And so Grover Justice actually came and spoke to us and really challenged us to just step out and be, just be Christ to everybody, and not to fall into mold of the regular society. And we had music, and the Methodist Youth Pastor came and spoke to us as well. And so that was all in the auditorium. And so that's just how our week goes. And is there any questions?
Thank you.
Next, Jennifer Hartley, who has a couple of roles here, so she'll share with you some information.
First off, I just want to thank you all so much for this opportunity to really let us show you what we're doing here, because we do so much, and I'm really grateful that you all are giving us this opportunity. Like she said, I am Jennifer Hartley, and I am president of senior class, and I'm also president of Key Club here. So I'll be talking about two things, and I'll try to hurry up so I don't hold, hold off any more time. But first off, for the senior class, I want to start off by telling you our senior privileges for this year. We go out to eat once a month. We alternate restaurants each month. So for August, we went to Elizole, which was a great success, and it went over really, really well, as I'm sure you all can figure. September, we went to Shoney's, and we kind of did this different. We went for breakfast. We have a lot of vocational students that go to Miller every single day, and they don't ever get to go out to lunch with us when we do go, because we leave at fourth period and we return back before 6:00. So that's the time that they leave, so they never get to go. So we went to Shoney's for breakfast, and they were so appreciative, and we were so, it worked out so well. So we're going to try to start doing that every other month to just be sure that they're included and they don't feel left out. And then this year, this month, we actually are going to Gaddy's, and we will be going there on Halloween. So, and then I forgot to mention, last month, when we went to Shoney's, we also came back to celebrate our getting fourth in the state for the ACT scores. We got to watch Taken in the auditorium, which was a really nice treat. So then, we also get to leave five minutes early on Fridays. We get hat day on Thursday and Friday. Me and Mr. Rowe are still working out the TV for the senior lounge. Our TV doesn't work, so we're working with Tim Burke to try to get a new flat screen for the senior lounge. And we had a senior pool party to start off the year at Jim and Julie Altman's house, and they were so receptive to us, and they were so nice that they opened their homes. So we want to thank them for that. We also have Senior Treat Day. We haven't started that yet. It actually starts this month on October 31st. The parents operate this, and we will be called out the last 10 minutes of routinely on October 31st, just to get our treat. And I would like to say a big thank you to the parents. I know we have some parents that serve for the senior class. They do so much, and we couldn't do anything without them. So we really appreciate them. We also had Powder Puff, which it was so much fun this year. It was a great success. We actually raised $1,400 on concession and being able to get in for admission. So $1,400 that will go to our senior trip or our senior sweatshirt. We still have to decide the money for both of those. Which leads me into the senior trip. We are actually making plans. We have a lot of obstacles to overcome with that, with sports and many different things. We're trying to get everybody involved, but we have decided that Gatlinburg will probably be where we're going to go. They have the Wilderness Lodge down there, a big hotel resort, and so we'll probably be going there. Probably be coming to you, you all, sometime in the near future, just to get those plans approved. And like I said, it's still a work in progress, so we'll, we'll be getting on that. And I think that is it for the seniors. And now I'll be moving on Key Club. Key Club is a service organization under the Kuanis Club. It is, its main focus is for community involvement and really serving our community and giving back. We meet once a month with a guest speaker. We try to, I think we're going to try to alternate our guest speakers. That way, we can really get more involvement. We helped with the Paint Pikeville Pink that we just recently had for motivational signs and face paintings, and we were there just, you know, floating around and making sure everything was okay. We are currently collecting magazines for the hospital, because we all hate going to the hospital and having to read magazines from two years ago. So we're trying to get the current magazines to them. We are collecting Play-Doh for Judy's Place for Kids. They use that Play-Doh when they interview the children who have been through domestic abuse and sexual abuse. So we are raising Play-Doh for them. We also take monthly visits to the nursing home, where we talk with the residents and just let them know that they're not, they're not being forgotten, and that we just, they just really love if we just sit and talk to them. So we also make... So we also make crafts that they are just really there for us to talk to them. We also help with the Kiwanis Fall Festival that we just had on September 29th to raise money for the local families in need. We worked the, I know I got to make balloon animals. I'm still, don't know how to make balloon animals, but that's what I did. And we helped with that. And we are also collecting items for the Appalachian Pregnancy Care Center for those women who are in difficult situations. And so we are raising all the items that they tell us that they need. And Ms. Huffman takes care of that. She contacts given, really gets that information. We are also painting pumpkins and making cards for people in the hospital. And we are going to be doing, actually tomorrow, Coats for Kids, where we separate and tag the coats to help for children in need during this, it's supposed to be cold winter, so let's hope it's cold. Operation Christmas Child will also be another project that we have where we gather items for people who aren't going to have as good of a Christmas as we probably will have. So those are our main tasks that we've done so far. And one of our biggest undertakings this year is going to be cystic fibrosis awareness. As you know, Mr. Blackburn and Sarah Blackburn have a child, Liam, that was diagnosed with cystic fibrosis. And everybody in the school knows him and really cares about him. So we are going to be trying to raise money for Cystic Fibrosis Foundation and really going to try to get the school involved. We have also talked to Sunday Beds, the local band, and we're going to try to get together a benefit concert for cystic fibrosis for all the proceeds that go to him. And lastly, I want to mention, I want to really thank Ms. Huffman because everybody that, every club that she sponsors, she has a newsletter each week and that keeps us up to date on what we have to do and what's going on. And she does a fantastic job. I tell her all the time, the school couldn't run without her. So, but that's all I have and I just want to thank you all so much for your time. Oh, sorry. Lastly, we have a fundraiser for Key Club that we're doing, Texas Roadhouse. We are going to get 10% of donations because we need fundraising to make sure everything, we can do everything we want to do. So you all are invited to Texas Roadhouse.
10% of the bill, if you go in, 10% of the bill goes to the Key Club.
Thank you.
And while she's doing that, very quickly, Max Tackett, who is president of the student council, is very ill. And she's also, well, she's pretty sick. And she's also, the lead, has one of the lead roles in Legend of Sleepy Hollow, so I'm sure she's just drunk and worn out. So I told her I would present what she would have shared with you tonight. We meet once a month. We began the year, the very first day of school, every employee here at Poppel High School got an apple the first day of school. I took some to the board office. I don't know if you got them or not, but I took them over there. The lunch ladies and the maintenance staff got cupcakes. The first day of school, we had ice cream sundaes for every student. We had a beach themed Blue Jean dance right after school had started and the Tackets were just awesome. I mean, you know Tammy, it was decorated to the hilt. Then at open house, student council provided the refreshments and guides throughout the school. We have secret pals, student council secret pals. Every council member draws names for every faculty and staff member and small gifts are given throughout the year. They're required to attend one board meeting, one site-based meeting, one PAC meeting. We aren't collecting dues for anything, so we all need fundraisers. We are selling suckers. We had Teacher of Staff Appreciation Day, the Wednesday before fall break. They all got oranges. Orange, you glad it's fall break? We are also going to be involved with Coats for Kids. BB and T Bank has the coats and they contacted us about, you know, separating the kid, you know, the coat sizes and all that. I had spoken yesterday with the lady at the West Care Homeless Shelter on the bypass and I said, "What can we do?" And she emailed me this list of things they need. And I was unaware that November is Hunger Homeless National Awareness Day. And so we're going to get involved with that. And I'd like, I haven't talked to Mr. Rowe yet, but I'd like maybe the whole school to kind of get involved in that. Madison does an unbelievable job. I know her and Jenna, they're in my room all the time, you know, working. And these kids are so involved, as you can see, in so many different things. Now I'm going to jump to the junior class president, that's Mac Hall, who is really busy with the play and he couldn't be here tonight. He also plays soccer. He's president of the junior class. First of all, and sometimes I get real teary-eyed because the parents that help, it is phenomenal. Teresa Combs and Lisa Maynard are my junior mommies and I call and they just take over. They just, you know, my, our senior parent is Kim Maynard, which is Kim Taylor, which is Lisa's sister. But anyway, if, we didn't have this parent support, I don't know what we would do. But I want to thank Mrs. Combs and I know I have told Lisa on numerous times, they are selling cookie dough right now. We've sold magazines to raise money for prom. So that's what's going on if anybody, you know, wants to, if any of y'all are interested in cookie dough. And the last thing is pep club. Sarah Varey is president of that and she's playing basketball, so she's in practice right now. We have 70 members. I tell you what's happened, all these sports, there are over 130 fall athletes. So 70 members are trying to take care of all of that. And that's hard. I don't know if you noticed when you came in, the football's hanging from the ceiling in the commons area and the soccer balls and the volleyballs, locker decorations. I mean, it's unbelievable. I mean, that's a lot. That's a lot of athletes. Homecoming Week is probably our biggest undertaking. It is unbelievable. And I talked to a parent of a student in the county who said, "I wish we had a homecoming week like you all do. We don't do this kind of stuff. This is unbelievable." We have dress-up days, the Powder Puff game, the dance, the parade. I mean, it's just unbelievable what these girls do. So if any of y'all have seen the parade, the city police, I'll work closely with them, they just cannot believe how awesome it is. And I guess that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to kind of put two people on the spot here, Dr. Vasalia and Ms. Kennon, kind of give us an update on the drama production and when the dates will be for that.
Well, we are, we are beginning curtains go up next Wednesday. And I brought some numbers to share. We have two performances Wednesday, two Thursday and two Friday, matinee performances. On Wednesday morning, we have scheduled 250 students from other schools to come. On Wednesday afternoon, 257. Thursday morning, we have 393. Thursday afternoon, we are sold out. That's our elementary school, when I say sold out, they're not actually paying for tickets. But Friday morning, we have 269. And then Friday afternoon is our high school show. And then as our students mentioned, we do have a dinner theater, dinner slash theater show on Saturday evening of next week. And we're really pleased actually with the turnout for the matinees. In fact, I had a new school call and request to bring students today, they called. So we were looking at a realistic expectation of $3,000 in ticket sales for those matinee shows, which is very nice. And hopefully it'll be a little bit more than that, but that's realistic because I always figure a little less because, you know, students don't show up for school that day, whatever. And as we said, seeing telegrams are going very well. We've delivered several here at school and some in the community. The kids seem to be enjoying it, sending them to teachers and other students alike, which is interesting. But the one stipulation is I have to approve the message. So I said they all have to be positive. But we have, we're working diligently and hope to be ready Wednesday. You have something you want to add to that?
Your debut.
This is my first play, truly. It's Who Done It and To Whom is the title. And it's a play within a play within a play. And you never know who actually is in charge of the play until the last line of the play. So it kind of keeps on your toes the whole time. It's the front quite a bit. It's a murder mystery within a murder mystery. That's not really a mystery. That's a murder. No one dies in that regard. So it should be a lot of fun. So I hope you guys can come.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to introduce our council members who are present. We have Ms. Kennon, please stand up, Ms. Kennon. Lyle Blackburn, Mr. Blackburn, stand up. Ms. Cooley and Ms. Belcher. And Mr. Lane had to step out to take pictures for our soccer game. But I want to thank these folks here. I've worked with many different school districts and I can tell you, there's not a better council than I've worked with. I want to thank them for their hard work. We spend a lot of time making tough decisions, but I can assure you that when we do that, we always have the kids' best interest at heart when we do those. I want to thank them for their hard work. Is there anything you all would like to share with the board members?
We'd like to thank you for your work too. For letting us do all the things that we get to do here.
Very good.
We know that each of you receive the same amount of pay as our board members do, which is absolutely zero. So we want to thank you as we shared earlier with the students, they're the reason we're here tonight. They're the reason we're here each day. So we want to thank you for always putting them first. The results usually show that for this school system.
I would just, I would like to compliment Ms. Cardy. She's one of the faces and was actually one of my favorite teachers when I went to school here and what an impact she had, not only on me, but I'm sure Ms. Huffman would add the same thing. A wonderful teacher.
Thank you. He's already my broker, you all. I don't know why he's saying all that.
It's all true. Sometimes, sometimes you get the thank yous as a teacher much later.
Very good. One thing I do have to do here, and if I don't, Ms. Tackett will kill me. I need to go over our I and I checks. Ms. Tackett, if you don't care, we'll put Ewok off till next month since things will be a little longer and we can cover that. But our I and I checks basically is the check of our school improvement plan, where we're at currently. We do know test scores will be coming out publicly probably by the end of this month. And at that point, we'll have to take our school improvement plan and readjust it based upon those scores. We know that. But this is the current plan we have in place. Until then, we can kind of give you an update of what's going on. Our biggest, it's in three components. The first component is academic performance. Basically, the first five parts of the academic performance deal with our professional learning communities. But I can tell you, either these are fully implemented or partially implemented. I want to thank our board for providing paid days for our teachers to be able to do PLCs. Many districts require their teachers to spend numerous hours after school doing this. Our district and our board is very kind to allow us to do this during the school day. So it's very beneficial for us. I want to thank Ms. Tackett and Mr. Belcher for stepping in at our last PLC. I was ordering the training for, for some special needs training and they stepped in and kind of, kind of jumped, jumped on with them and made sure we're all doing what we're supposed to do and they saved some really good conversations. As we move on down, another big part we have here at school, we know we're part of Advanced Kentucky and our AP, we're very excited about that. And our teachers are continually receiving training on that. So that's partially implemented. We will continue receiving training as provided by Advanced Kentucky. We have laying the foundations training, which is the, basically the pre-AP trainings that we send our teachers who teach classes that are sort of like the pre-AP classes. So that's partially implemented also. Everything we have here is basically going on or not going, the one that's not going on currently is AP 3B. It says formative assessment data will be analyzed and guided instruction through a shared location. We're in the process of breaking this down. Basically, what we'll be doing is we'll be taking formative assessment from different subject areas and we'll be saving this to a shared folder located on our server. We're in the process of getting that set up. But as asked for that, that is the only one we're not fully up and running on when it comes to academic performance. The second part is the learning environment. Learning environment is a big part that we're now doing here at school. We use Edmodo, which is a, best way to say it, an educational version of Facebook. And our students are loving it and our teachers are really involved with it. So students can go there and actually, they can post on the walls like you would Facebook and talk educationally, interact with teachers and actually be able to upload and download their lessons from that. So it's a really good program for us. Our teacher websites are still up and strong. A lot of information there for students and for their teachers. And our English department is still using turnitin.com, which is a portal for them to check for, first of all, plagiarism. And second of all, for them turning in assignments and an easy way for them to be able to do and to correct grammar and so forth on written assignments. So those are the three things we're really doing with our learning environment. The last part is the wellness. In our wellness, we've got two small parts of it. One of them is going to be checking BMIs. That'll be done at the end of the school year. We've done that for the last couple of years. And we're still offering our aerobics and walking class for our female students. We wanted to get them more involved with the wellness part of it. So that's partially implemented too. So that is the update on I and I's. Do you have any questions? That's our presentation.
Thank you. Thank the council members for being here tonight. We appreciate what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. And then we'll move down to the elementary school principal report, Mr. Jones.
I have just a couple of things. I know you want to get to your meeting, but first of all, we get the opportunity to bring our entire elementary school next Thursday to the play, so we're excited about that and we appreciate the opportunity to get to do that. Have a couple of quick things to share with you. First of all, we will release our first nine weeks report cards this Friday, the 19th. Our first nine weeks report cards will go home. I was approached a couple of weeks ago from some representatives from the March of Dimes, along with Mr. Joe Kinzer from East Kentucky Broadcasting, had prior approval from Mr. Green. And they came and asked if we would do a volunteer program in which we send home the boxes for a March of Dimes donations. I sent those boxes home with every student with the, a note that said, "This is completely voluntary, you know, I'm not going, you know, no one's going to ask again, you know, if you turn this in," but I gave a date to turn in. We had the opportunity to present the March of Dimes with $1,400 on behalf of our school. Anytime we do that, our kids go big on that. So, you know, with a little or no prodding at all, we were able to present them $1,400 on behalf of our school. They were very, very appreciative. We, as you know, from the time, I believe I am correct in saying, from the time we started site-based councils at Poppel Elementary School in the early 90s, our council's always been a modified version. The normal size site-based council is six members, including the principal. At Poppel Elementary, we have nine members, including the principal. Now, we were notified about a month ago that we met the threshold percentage-wise of our students who are minority. So we are required now to have a teacher and a parent representative, a minority representative on our council. We will have an election tomorrow and Wednesday from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the lobby to elect a parent representative for our site-based council. And Ms. Meryl Silvers has been nominated to serve as a teacher representative on our site-based council. So we now have 11 member council, including the principal. Be able to give you an up-to-date, actually, we only had one ballot turned in for the parent minority representative, but the election's not complete, so I'll share that with you next month. Good news is we are up, in the second month attendance, we are up 37 students at our school. So we're really happy with that number from this time last year. Also, Mr. Rowe mentioned earlier, PLCs. We too have the opportunity to take in PLCs at our school. We are actually having those right now. We had some PLCs today. We'll have some PLCs tomorrow during the school day and one on Thursday. We are working with our teachers on the SITS program, the Continuous Instructional Improvement Technology System program. And as Mr. Green likes to describe it, it's a one-stop shop for all your educational needs is what it's going to be. It's an interesting program. There's a lot of information there. They're continually updating that. Our teachers are learning that and becoming familiar with that program. That's all I have at this time. Do you have any questions?
Well, thank you. We've got, we've got a lot of information coming up and of course, a lot's embargo that we can't say anything about until the 29th. And of course, Mr. Belcher's going to be giving much more in-depth analysis of that for, for all of us trying to explain the accountability model later, so, but thank you.
I think he might be looking forward to that.
I'm sure that he is.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We'll move down to the instructional supervisors report to Ms. Tackett.
I don't have anything and I think Johnny's, it's going to be a little bit later in the agenda.
If it makes sense to do so, we'll do a little bit of accountability.
Yeah, if it makes sense to do so, we'll do a little bit of accountability, but we'll see how everyone's feeling at that point.
All right.
All right, we'll move down to the action consent items as presented here. If you need to move anything down to further discussion, let us know at this time. If not, I'll make a motion, have a motion to approve those. Have a motion, Mr. Beeler. Second, Ms. Combs. Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Move down to action discussion items. I guess now, Mr. Johnny Belcher, our instructional supervisor with Next Generation Learners. You're on deck.
So, now let's go to accountability. And the idea is to, is accountability is all about trying to get our students to the absolute best that they can be so that they can go on to college and career and they can come back like Mr. Blackburn and talk about their favorite teacher. And accountability is part of that too. The tests are all across the board as far as K through 12 this year. Not K through, actually, third being the first. But I do say K because of the green screen that I mentioned earlier is part of that. But I kind of included this as just something that teachers could go back and look at. Certainly, each item of this is a board. You don't have to feel like you have to be familiar with every item. But basically, what this is saying is math and reading is being tested all the way through. And in terms of growth, when I talk about here in a minute, math and reading is the two that's kind of being measured in that way. And so, that's kind of what this shows in seeing that the math column, and then when we look at writing and reading, if you look at both, it's going to create a continuous column for both. But not as much to say about that as the new accountability system. One of the ladies at the Office of Assessment and Accountability, she likened it to a snowball rolling downhill, gathering debris as it rolled. It has gained several components along the way. And so, for, to describe this to, one, to teachers, but also to a community where you're actually kind of just looking for a way to see where your school is and your student, it's a little bit hard at times. But there's five aspects with this. Achievement is kind of what we always thought of with testing. That's what you would have grown up being familiar with. Gap, growth, college career readiness and graduation rate are probably new to accountability for schools in terms of putting all that in one model. Gap, I'm not going to describe in great detail like I did with teachers. But what this is, is it's looking at minority populations in your school that have traditionally scored low. So, you're going to see free and reduced lunch, special education populations, African-American, Hispanic, those kinds of populations is what we're considering a gap group. It's a non-duplicated gap group. They go and they get those kids. So, for instance, if a kid was in special education but also free and reduced lunch, we're just going to pick that student out once for accountability. But picking all those students out for gap group, and then you're just looking at that group and saying, "What percent of them are proficient?" And then that's going to go into the accountability score. Does that make sense? Growth is taking a student's score prior year and then the year of testing and looking to see if they've actually grown from one year to the next. It gets a little bit more complicated in how they're looking at cohorts of students. But basically, that is actually an item that I think we've been looking for that has been absent in years past. College and career readiness, there's a lot stronger emphasis in this model for college and career readiness in terms of ACT, also in terms of career-ready, in terms of vocational, technical. And then graduation rate is just what it says. How many were graduating our senior year compared to the cohort model that moves through the high school. But the thing that's happening with this is at the high school level, you've got a weighting on each of these. So, the achievement, gap, growth, college career readiness and graduation rate are each weighted 20%. And so, they're going to get scores for each of those and then they're going to weight them by .20. And then those combine to an overall score. That's not the sensational part. The sensational part is this next part. Once, as a school, you get an overall score, what we're doing is we're taking the state schools across the board and ranking them from highest to lowest and applying a percentile rank. And then that is actually how they're going to measure whether your school or your district is distinguished, proficient, or needs improvement. So, if you had 100 schools in the state, you ranked them from highest to lowest, only how many would be proficient, or sorry, distinguished? 10. If we're looking at how many proficient, there could be 30. But that's guaranteeing across the state that we're going to have what percent that are needs improvement. Because it's just ranking. We're going to have 70% of schools across the state that are going to be labeled needs improvement. And that's the sensational part. There's not this one standard score, for parents that listen later, there's not this one standard score that every school's trying to reach. It's you're competing against each other. So, this is a competitive model. And so, when you're getting percentile ranks and you're hearing in the newspaper possibly about a school that needs improvement, proficient or distinguished, realize that that's a competitive model rank between schools. Does that make sense? Okay? What we're, this year, for the first time, the Kentucky School Report Card is the reporting place for all of our data. So, like Mr. Green and Mr. Jones mentioned earlier, the embargoed scores, we're going to a secure site currently so that we can view those scores and then check for quality control. And so, what you're going to see again is those areas of achievement, gap, growth, college career readiness, graduation rate, and so on. For example, 57.9 may be a score, but again, as a percentile, that's going to be ranked by schools. And so, what you'll see for a next slide is in terms of a school kind of measuring its salt, you'll have a percentile rank in Kentucky. And where this is 71, just over that 70% threshold, we're considering that school to be proficient. And so, that's what we'll be looking at as a school to see where we fall in that. So, 95th percentile and above, or sorry, 90th percentile and above would be considered distinguished and then so on like we looked earlier. Does that make sense? This is something you're likely to see in the papers, is we've got labels for schools and districts. Schools of distinction, 95th percentile or higher. So, that's more than just distinguished, the way that they're saying this. So, if you're in that 95th percentile or higher, we're going to label you a district of distinction or a school of distinction. High-performing schools is much like just the distinguished mark, 90th percentile or higher. High-progress school is how fast your school is growing. And then priority schools, lowest 5%, so that's kind of like what you've been used to in the past as far as schools that might need help. Does that make sense? Focus schools, and I got in a little bit of a rush back here because I know it is late. I do want to go back and show you one thing. Focus school, if I was looking at our district and trying to look at this model and trying to see where we might be weak or we might have an area that we might need to worry about, gap, like I mentioned, was looking at the groups that are minority and then looking at their ability to be proficient. We have small gap groups. So, for instance, you know, an African-American population, or Hispanic population, or special ed population, or free and reduced lunch population. As long as you have 10 in the sum of all that. So, if you could pull 10 students out of that group and they could be labeled one of those things, then they're going to apply a gap group calculation to you. So, in a small district, you could have 10 students possibly affecting 20% of your accountability if you're at a high school. Now, something I also got in a rush on is with the elementary, that's 30, 30, and 40 in terms of their percentage. Middle school, 28, 28, 28, and then finally 16 for college and career readiness. So, it's just because the group is so small that you can have a very small number of students affecting that. And that's a little scary as a district. So, that's a look for for us. Growth, like I mentioned, is moving ahead, college and career readiness, and then graduation rate. Yeah, so we go forward. Does that make sense? Okay, focus school, going back to that gap. If, if you have a gap group that when they look at your score in the gap group and they rank you from highest to lowest, if you have a gap group that's in the lowest 10% of schools across the state, they'll label you a focus school, which would mean that you would possibly have the interjection of help in terms of CSIF, in terms of things like that, and so on to help your school. If you have a particular gap group, like for instance, just free and reduced lunch population that is scoring in the third standard deviation, it could put you in as a focus school. And then graduation rate, if it's 60% for two years or lower, it could also put you in. The graduation rate, we have absolutely no worries about. And to be honest, the focus school is probably somewhat a distant worry, but it's just a little bit scary because of the small populations that we have. Does that make sense? So, if you hear the term focus school from other schools or across the state, it's dealing with gap group only. It doesn't have anything to do with the achievement in terms of the whole school but the gap group. This is the real sensational part. That's probably the whole reason I'm even speaking to you. The new model is based on college and career readiness. And we know, like the little video said, that across the nation, we've kind of come up short most times in terms of what we're calling college and career readiness. For instance, in 2011, our seniors, 40% of them, met the ACT benchmarks. 60% of our students across the state were considered not ready for college or career. In reading, in math, 36%. And so, what this model has done, it has mapped backwards all the way to the elementary school, that kind of proficiency rate. So, for instance, in 2011, under the old test at the elementary, 76% of students were proficient in reading. What we can expect to see this year as a normal, a norm for that, is 40% will be proficient under this new accountability model. So, what you can see is you can see paper's kind of focusing in on that and saying that all of a sudden, a school has done what? Dropped from 76% proficient to 40% proficient. But the thing that we do have to realize is it's that the bar has just been set higher. And that's the reason for that abrupt change. The elementary's going to fill out the hardest, as you can see with this. 76, middle school, 70, high school, 65, could drop to 40. So, you're not seeing as much difference as in the high school because of that. And that's because they mapped backwards. So, if I was going to probably try to sum up what they were probably thinking in terms of making this accountability model is that we know that scores are low in terms of college and career readiness. We're going to map that backwards and we're going to make everybody competing against themselves versus just one standard to try to get everybody ramped up. So, that's kind of what you're seeing with this. It's a very much competitive problem. For educators, it's the multi-facet part that's a little tough to deal with. And like we said, with the gap group just being a small group. And also, if you have anything to add, Mr. Green, too, you can do that with me. There's more parts of accountability to come. Not in this year's reporting, but the students that are testing this year, the results we get back the following year is going to include something called a program review. And it's going to be 23% of our accountability. And that's actually something that each school across the state grades theirselves about. So, each school sits down and does a program review of their school in arts and humanities. And there's actually three other, or two other areas besides that, career readiness. Mr. Prendergast, help me out. Writing also.
And then elementary has K3.
And K3 in the elementary. And the only thing that's a little scary about that is in a competitive model where you're competing against other schools and then you're having to grade yourself. And traditionally here, I'll just say that we grade ourselves harder than probably someone coming in from the outside. But schools could use this in such a way to pad their score a little bit. But there are talks about how to audit that and things like that. But those are discussions that are happening in educational circles. And then finally, in 2014, 15, even a third component that will be part of accountability is teacher effectiveness and growth. It's a new system that's coming down the pipe that we will be looking at how we measure teachers' effectiveness and growth. And then that will make 30%, what I'll call a soft score, where each district is evaluating themselves, both as program review and also on teacher effectiveness. So, 70% of the score, kind of hard in the sense that you can get true numbers that are comparable, but 30% of the score will come from self-grading. So, just to be aware of that. And then that is finally kind of an overview of it. It's so late, I don't want to... Have you watched the video from Louisville? Jefferson County did a video. It's about seven minutes. It gives their spin on the accountability system. But basically, kind of how it ends is the fact that the bar has been raised and now it's their job to try to lift their students up to that. And again, it's all based on college and career readiness. So, that's the idea behind the system. So, as you're hearing those names, that's some of the familiar names.
Mr. Belcher, first scores.
Surely I'm glad we have you all to understand this.
It's, yeah.
Because I'm not understanding it.
What we did with teachers was more detailed. And you just, I mean, it wouldn't make sense for me to go into more detail, but it is multifaceted.
Our first scores will be coming out when?
October 29th. And then I've also heard October 31st. We really feel that the state will move to try to get public release of scores before November starts. So, that's our hope. They did reach the goal of getting embargoed scores to us about the time that they said they would, after one delay.
And if we go way down, we're going to have a hard time explaining how the school that was fourth in the ACT scores in one year turn around and...
And that's the conversation.
We go to the bottom on this.
That's the conversations that we've had. And it's been a little bit of doom and gloom as we're trying to get our mind wrapped around it. But remember, you know, this model is comforting at POC. I wouldn't want to be just anywhere with that because they are, we are competing against other schools. And so, regardless of what the test is, we're having to compete against other schools. Traditionally, we've ranked pretty good in a competition model.
Has there been any backlash from KEA on teacher evaluation? And I know this is very limited, but are we having any backlash on it?
I would certainly anticipate that there will be. And of course, that is not this, this school year that we're in, but the following year with that. And we're trying to, as you heard Mr. Rowe mentioned earlier, just with the Ewoks and where he and the instructional supervisors and Mr. Jones and Mr. May, the special education director, are completing those now. We're slowly trying to convert the staff to realize or to anticipate what lies ahead there. However, there will be pushback regarding that, I would assume. But the piece that makes this so difficult is that Mr. Belcher spent the vast majority of his time explaining the accountability model for this year only. And of course, he shared with you what lies next. But the problem is, for parents and community members, is that for the assessment scores we're receiving and that will be made public at the end of this month, the game changes again the following year with the calculations and it changes again the following year after that. So, you've got three years, like he said with that analogy of the snowball and it gathering debris, that just keep adding on different segments or different... debris, that just keep adding on different segments or different portions, with the third year being that evaluation or growth. But thankfully, with our staff here, I mean, it, it, the, the teachers here within this school and also the elementary school, look at it like, hey, the doors are open, the vast majority of them, they want you to see the wonderful things going on within the classroom. And just as a testimony for the staff and the students and the administration here in this building, two pieces to this puzzle we already know that is not embargoed, and that's one, of course, the ACT scores, where the school, uh, district ranks fourth in the state, but also on that college and career readiness, out of 174 school districts, again, we ranked fourth in the state. So regardless what measuring stick is made by the Commonwealth of Kentucky, we, we want to make sure that our community members and stakeholders and parents and students realize, it, it's what the young lady said tonight that was on the academic team, that, and that said, uh, concerning excellence and what's demanded here, and, and that's the bar, the expectation for our students and the staff, and it's, it's just a culture here, uh, concerning that level of excellence. So feel really good about, uh, the release of the scores at the end of, uh, at the end of this month. Of course, it's about continuous improvement, and we want to continually improve each and every day, but getting this information out is, it can't, can't stress how important it is so that parents and students realize how they're being measured. And first of all, under the old, uh, system with the NCLB before the state received the waiver for No Child Left Behind, probably what, 80 schools were going to fall into needs improvement, now 70% or 80% of the schools are going to fall in needs improvement, now 70% under this new system. So it's not really helping, uh, the, the ones in needs improvement out a great deal, because it's just cutting or chopping off, if you will, 10%. Would you not agree? And of course, Mr. Belcher, aside from being our instructional supervisor, uh, one of them, he's also a mathematician, so he can, he can share more with you about that, but the, the, our ultimate goal or directive is to make sure students are ready for the next level. And I, I think that parents and students and our community members will, will see that from themselves.
I think that was the sentiment too, that I can report to you from working with teacher groups, um, is that the bottom line is, we're trying to, we're still trying to get students to the next level. That hasn't changed.
But we do have, I mean, you know, there is a PR factor here, and of course, ever since Kira came in, I mean, how many different testing programs have we had? And I, I know that sometimes the people in the community feel, what, what's wrong with y'all?
Right.
You know, y'all are supposed to be fairly intelligent people. You're all high school graduates. Why in the world can't you get this testing straight? It's, but of course, it's not just us, it's the State Department.
Right.
And the federal government.
And just as Mr. Belcher said, they're, they're trying to raise these all around there, focus them all on college and career readiness, to raise the bar.
Which is probably in our favor. It's something that I think, you know, the years I've been here and those of you being a part of this system for much longer, it's always been about getting students to the next level. And I think as long as our schools are, are, are performing on ACT, college entrance exams that are allowing students to get there, more importantly, as long as we have students coming back and telling stories about how they were prepared, um, that's the PR we need. And then, but it is, and the reason that we're addressing it for not, with the PR factor that would be held so, you know, tight, that we want our school to be well represented, and so that's why we wanted to address how we're being measured.
And, and of course, we'll measure ourselves. The way we look at this is just like a, uh, when, when you go see your physician or your doctor, and you, you'll get a couple of, of checks, whether it's your blood pressure or cholesterol, or, or your weight, or what have you. Well, we will use other measurements. For example, in Mr. Rowe's weekly stakeholder email that just recently went out, picture of students with, uh, 100, or over 100 students now in dual credit courses with the University of Bible. As of right now, we can't check a box and get points for that within the current assessment system, but that's one of the things we're really proud of, is trying to get, get more students involved, not only in the AP courses, but also the dual credit, uh, courses at U-PAC, and we can't thank them enough. And it's, this assessment model won't measure what our students are giving back and what Ms. Huffman and, uh, the, the presidents of the different clubs shared with the amount of community service that they're giving back. And it, this, for those, uh, community stakeholders that was watching the meeting earlier, they were probably overwhelmed with the amount of community service that our students are providing. And again, whether it be with FCA, National Honor Society, uh, uh, or Student Council, Student Government, any of those groups, that won't be measured within the state's accountability model, but again, our community, they will be measuring that as far as the well-rounded students that we're producing. So we, i- instead of just, and, and usually say this during graduation, but instead of just the ultimate goal being trying to make sure that students are great test takers, we want to make sure that the great
Human beings.
Mothers and fathers, human beings, civic leaders, and, and hopefully husbands and wives out there. So you, tonight, you just saw a sampling of each of those i- i- individual areas, and again, with the arts and the drama, that'll be a portion of the program reviews. The sad part, just as Mr. Belcher alluded to, as of right now, the state does not have a rubric for how the program reviews are going to be scored, uh, and those are due at the end of this school year, nor that do they have, have they arrived at a plan at the way that they're going to be audited. And again, we're responsible for completing those by the end of the school year, so still a, a many tasks remain.
But once we give results, I'll be happy to bring those back to you also, and give some detail of where we are. And, um, and then as we learn more, we're trying to be proactive in trying to get this out, one, through Pike TV, but also we've sent a couple of statements to our local newspapers, but certainly just your voice, and about how the accountability model, to the best of your ability to explain it. If you want more detail too, I've got plenty of detail to show.
The one graphic with, with, that has everything on one page is really good summary graphic.
Yeah. But, um...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belcher. Good job.
Thank you.
And we'll move down to other actual discussion items, other business? Mr. Green, anything about for the board?
Don't have anything.
No other business? Information review items, personnel report?
Uh, yes, Ms. Tackett, uh, she would pop open the attachment there on the personnel report.
That's awkward.
And, uh, as she's opening that, you'll see, uh, substitutes listed, and also one retirement. This afternoon, she presented me with a letter.
Oh my goodness.
And it's, uh, it's attached for your benefit concerning Ms. Tackett's retirement.
Is it a typo?
As instructional supervisor effective December 31, I believe, or December 31st of this year. So, no, it's not a typo. Ms. Tackett, if you'd like to expand upon that, please feel free to.
That, that kind of says it all. I have truly, truly enjoyed being part of this district and working here, and the challenges and the opportunities provided, uh, to grow as a professional. It's very easy to see coming in from another district, it's very easy to see why this district is always high performing. It is a great place to work. Great place for students.
Thank you for, for your service, not only in the past, but also until the end of this year, and we wish you the best. And i- i- if you'd like, I think it's one of the most noble things, uh, if you, and, and I despise putting you on the spot, and should probably say, why did you ask me to share that tomorrow? But, uh, if you'd like, you can share plans after the end of this year, because it's too good not to share.
Uh, he's referring to the participating in the mission opportunities, and it's something that my church is very involved in. I've done one mission trip to Venezuela for a week, was not, that was about four years ago, was not able to go again because of work commitments. So this spring and April, I'm going to Tennessee on a trip, and then in June, Jack and I are going together to Honduras for a week. And I'm just really excited, we'll be working at a children's home there for a week, and I'm really excited to, to be able to do those kinds of, of, uh, activities, stay involved in, with kids and church.
Still going to be serving children, so thank you.
Okay, we move down to miscellaneous?
No.
No miscellaneous to be brought for the board? Don't need a closed session for anything?
No, sir.
I guess we'll move down to adjournment.
Oh, yes, uh, we, on the, uh, the only thing under miscellaneous, well, two things, I'm sorry. One, and Ms. Gardi had already given me hers, we've got, uh, uh, our neighbors, uh, the Pike County Board of Education will be hosting the regional, uh, meeting concerning the Kentucky School Boards Association. So, uh, if, uh, you've, you've probably received that letter, but, uh, after the meeting, please feel free to let me know if, unless you have a scheduling conflict, I'll try to get every board member scheduled, uh, to attend that. Also, President Ramsey of the University of Louisville, uh, is inviting the, uh, board to the Hampton Inn for a reception, October the 22nd at 6:00 PM. President Ramsey will also be visiting Pikeville High School and some of the admissions, uh, folks, along with a former student of ours. So, uh, look forward to the visit from the University of Louisville and President Ramsey, and also, uh, you're invited to the reception.
When is he coming?
Uh, he will be here on, uh, I would assume the 22nd, also let me...
22nd, 1:00 PM.
Of what?
The October. So next, next week, he will be here Monday, the 22nd at 1:00 PM, and then the reception will be at the Hampton Inn, uh, at 6:00 PM. So, just wanted to...
Are you, is the, is the board supposed to be there?
Well, you're encouraged to be there.
Okay.
We look forward to that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. We'll move down to, uh, adjournment then. We'll have a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight, which was informational, very good. Ms. Cardi, you make a motion, have a second. Mr. Tackett was second in a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, we'll be adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.